Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Called the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And we'll start with item number three, which is public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comments? Asking one last time, is there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to item number four, approved minutes from the December 6, 2016 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item, I'm going to agenda item number five, first electors report. Just under first electors report, I started contract negotiation with the Public Works Union and the Clerks Union. Initial meetings went very well. I didn't yell anybody, as Frank will tell you, which is probably a positive for all of us. No, I'm kidding aside, they went very well. We'll be meeting again the end of January. Give some initial proposals to the union, they're going to review those, and then we'll get back together. My goal is to have at least the financial package of the contract negotiations done. I'll be presenting my budget to the Board of Finance the end of February, beginning of March. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to go out of order to item number eight. Motion by Len, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item, item number eight, discussion take possible action regarding hiring of public works laborers. In your packets, you have a memo and a letter. The memo is to myself from the Public Works Board. Said the Board of Public Works is recommending the hiring of Chris Edwards and Todd Fowler for the full-time laborer position pending any necessary pre-employment screening, background check, and license verification. Sincerely, Sean Walsh, who was the chairman. And there is also a letter to the Public Works Board from Tony Di Primo, Director of Public Works. As a second request, I am recommending current seasonal employees Chris Edwards and Todd Fowler to please be hired as full-time laborers. Department is understaffed due to retirements. These positions need to be filled to staff one vacant truck driver position that was currently existed in the fiscal year 17 budget. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour hire Chris Edwards and Todd Fowler to the full-time laborers position pending any necessary pre-employment screening, background checks, and license verification effective tomorrow, January, excuse me, December 22nd. Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion?
That's both of them tomorrow, correct?
Both of them tomorrow.
Okay.
And just for the record, for seniority, so there's no problem, Chris will be hired first, Todd will be hired second, as that's the way it is on the letter. So that way, there's no issue. So note that in the record, please. Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Congratulations, boys. Okay, I'd like to make another motion to go out of order to item number nine, discussion take possible action regarding hiring of fire clerk. This is the motion by Al, second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. In your packets, you have a letter to myself from Pat Lombardi, Patrick Lombardi, excuse me, Vice Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners. Interview committee, along with the Board of Fire Commissioners, is pleased to send the name of Mrs. Carrie Lewis for the position of part-time clerk for the Seymour Fire Department to your board. Mrs. Lewis was unanimous choice of the applicants interviewed for the position. It is our hope that the Board of Selectmen will look favorably upon this recommendation. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. On behalf of the Board of Fire Commissioners, I would like to extend a very merry Christmas and prosperous new year to all. Sincerely, Pat Lombardi. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour offer the position of part-time clerk for the Seymour Fire Department to Mrs. Carrie Lewis, pending all background and other checks that are necessary effective tomorrow, December 22nd. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Congratulations. Okay. All right, so we'll go back into order, and we'll go back up to item number six, discussion take possible action regarding Greenway Trail bid award. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to our Economic Development Director, Fred Masori, and guest. So Fred, if you can just speak into the mic. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We're here tonight to discuss the rebidding that went out for the Greenway Trail. This is a project that the town's been working on for the last couple of years, and we're at a very important part of the process. Earlier in the fall, we put out the first bid for Phase One, which is about 900 linear feet of the first phase of the Greenway Trail that will go along the Route Eight corridor up to Route 67 Bridge. At that time, the bid package went out, and it was due at the beginning of September. And as you all know, with Labor Day ending, summer ending, school schedule starting, it's a very difficult time to get into a new work schedule. I think part of those factors were the case of why we only received one bid at that time. The one bid that we did receive was much higher than what we had budgeted. So we decided to take a step back, work with our team here, which is made up of Mylona Mc Room as the consulting firm, the State DOT and their liaison, who's here tonight, Chris Faulkner from VHB, to look at our bid packet, to see how we could possibly change the scope of work that would better serve the town in finding a bidder that would fall into line of what we originally budgeted for this project. The good and the bad of it was, is that we realized with the delay, we would not start the work at the end of the fall if the bid was successful, start some work, stop it, and then restart it back in the springtime when the weather permitted it. Adding that additional timeframe added cost to the project overall. So with the bid going back out again, we were able to scale it down to 120-day construction cycle to start at the beginning of spring. Those are just one of the items that we felt we can condense the budget process down to, to bring the cost more in line to what, again, we originally allocated for this project. So when we did the rebidding again, with some of these changes, we also, if you look at the packet that I gave you, the memorandum that was given by our Mylona Mc Room, it does also state some alternatives or added alternates. And what we did was, we took out some of the scope of work project items that were alternate, so that based on the bidding packets that we received, we could make a decision at that time without having to go back out to bid. If all the bids did come back high, we could just eliminate some of those alternatives out, alternates, so that we can go forward with the project and then possibly do some of those scope of works later on in a later date, but not delay the project going forward. So in doing those steps, we felt that it was much more aggressively placed, and we can get a better pool of bidders to come into this process and hopefully be more competitive than the original bid that only resulted in one response. So we sent it out to bid, and December 1st, we received the responses. This time around, we received 12 responses. And from the scope of work that was presented, there was basically a plus or minus of about $500,000 in the bidding amounts. So, but they were all very qualified contractors that were bidding. Both our consultant and the State of DOT confirmed that. But we do have one that was the lowest bid that we wanted to go forward with, and basically, that's what we're here to entertain and hopefully approve, so that then it'll allow us to then put the contracts with the appropriate firm to go forward with the scope of work. I guess if you have any questions for me or for Chris Faulkner, who again, is the liaison, he can answer any questions. He's the one that put together, besides what you have from Mylona Mc Room, the paperwork that kind of just gives you a breakdown of what was originally agreed upon in terms of budget, what came in, the differences, and the town's share would have to be if we went forward with this bid.
Okay, any questions for Fred?
I don't.
Or any question, or Chris, anything you want to add?
So I'm reading the front notes. It has La Rosa, La Rosa Earth Group, right?
Correct.
Base bid is 736,560. Within your notes on the bottom, it says La Rosa Earth Group would appear to be the lowest bidder based on the total above. During the bid review, it was discovered that La Rosa Earth Group LLC base bid total did not include the revised quantity of 77 linear feet.
Yeah, that added $1,890 to the bid.
Okay.
And then even with that error in the linear footage costs, it still was a lower bid than the next one in line.
Even with the Schultz's with their errors on there?
Correct.
Yeah, Schultz was $159.
More.
Yeah.
So all the RFP parameters were met by each of these bidders, and you had a checklist, and there's a process, and you guys documented all that?
Absolutely. So part of Mylona Mc Room's scope of work is that's what they do. They go through all the bids, which is the blue top, and then they go through it and they make their recommendations after reviewing all the documents that needed to be, you know, supplied with the bid. And then before they even give this to us, they go and discuss that with Chris's group to make sure it fits the state's requirements. And then they give us their opinion, which they do. And that's what you have in front of you now. So I feel very comfortable to accept their recommendations, and I'm happy that they were kind enough to work with us on this process so that we can keep the cost down, because that's ultimately what we were trying to do here.
And the recommendation is La Rosa Earth Group LLC?
That's correct.
Were they based out of?
What's that?
Were they based out of La Rosa Earth Group? Meredith? Thank you.
My recommendation would be that we go forward with not only the base bid, but also with the bid alternates. Would then have an additional $32,000 town share added on. But again, I want to be very clear that this scope of work is including a 10% contingency. So we're hoping that obviously, as with the project goes on, we stay below that. And that would be a worst-case scenario kind of figure that you're looking at. The other thing is, I think that if you look at the way the alternates are set up, for instance, I mean, and not that it's a big savings, but for the benches, similar to what was done at the Broad Street Bridge, we may do a public, you know, request, or maybe to the business community, to see if they want to do any sponsorships of the benches as a courtesy to the town. And those are the type of things that I could work as facilitating and just to try to bring some of those additional costs down. But if not, then that would be the cost for what they would be in the overall project.
So just so I'm clear, Fred, one more question. The additive alternatives numbers one through four then, under La Rosa Earth Group's bid, so
Yes.
all of those are being done?
They are, they are.
So what's the grand total there? I don't have a calculator out. It's probably a little bit over 800,000?
Is that the? I think that's the number that you have.
Just for totals.
Yeah, it's eight.
About 800.
Eight sixteen, roughly. Eight fourteen. Give or take.
Just so everybody knows what the grand total is.
Sure.
And what was the budget amount for us, for our piece?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't remember the budget amount.
Seven.
Seven something. Yeah.
758 was the original budget.
I mean, within the base bid, we're okay. It's the add alternates that would take us over budget.
But Fred has a good point, that if companies in town want to sponsor, then that would help.
Yeah, like, again, I don't want to put any companies, but there's a company that does do, like, the bike rack. You know, there's a firm in town that
Exactly.
This is their demographic, so I would go out to see if they would be supportive of that. I don't want to put them, again, on public, you know, to say that they would have to do it. But, you know, I think that there's some groups and people that would want to support. Or maybe even just residents that want to dedicate a bench to someone, you know, so.
What are the add-ons?
Sorry?
What are the add-ons?
The add-ons?
Yeah.
Oh, if you look at, oh, I'm sorry. So the add-ons, if you look at this front page?
Not the cost, what specifically are they?
What are the actual, what are we buying with the extra money?
Well, it's, they're broken down on the front.
Well, it says it's alternate.
It's just all, yeah. Additive alternative.
Oh, it doesn't show number one to? Oh, I apologize. I thought you had this copy. So number one is light poles, fixtures, and foundations for the 68,000. Alternate two is benches. Alternate three is trash receptacles. And alternate four is bike rack.
Thank you.
I apologize. I thought you had this copy, which has them broken down so that.
Okay, what other?
And just so you know, all the bids that came in were all broken down the same way. That they all broke, you know, gave you a base bid and then the others.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Here's good.
And just the last thing, if we were to go forward, we'd work on getting the contracts finalized with Corporation Counsel, authorizing First Electman Miller to engage in that contract. And then the state provided us with the documentation to then work with the contractor. And we would hope for April 1, April 1 start date with approximately 120-day construction cycle.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Fred Masori, Economic Development Director, and award the bid for the Nogatuck River Greenway Phase One to La Rosa Earth Group LLC as presented. Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Bless you. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Fred. Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Okay, item number seven, discussion regarding winter preparedness with Public Works Director Tony. If you can speak into the microphone, just so they can hear you at home.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
What I've attached here for the board is basically what we've been up against to prepare for this winter. As you could see in the report, it's a lot of hard work. And also attached to the first page is correspondence that I'd like the board to review with regard to new weather service that we're in the final stages of purchasing. That's going to give us advanced information on pending storms. And I also like to illustrate a new reporting strategy, where I could communicate better with the board before, during, and after the storm, and a cost summary of what each storm is costing. Man-hours, equipment usage, cost. Anybody has any questions?
The, so why don't you go through just kind of the first, the cover page?
Yep.
And just talk a little bit about the different way of reporting, how you're providing information pre-storm and what you're doing. And then if you can go into a little bit more depth on that last page, where we're breaking down the actual cost of each storm.
Sure.
If you could, so the Saturday 1217 storm. Well, actually, we can just, we'll just go to that while it's there. If everybody goes to that last page of that section? So that's, storm cost the town roughly $19,000.
Correct.
So you can see how it was broken.
That summary is giving you, you know, the staff involved, the equipment that we used. It gives you the size of the spreader in each truck. Gives you the total amount of salt we used for the storm. And then it has a running for all the hours that were involved. And at the end, if you look at the numbers, it gives you the cost of what we spent. And below that, it'll give you a little briefing of what was involved with the storm. You know, the length of the storm. The hours it took to clean the storm. And then before that, I mean, there was a pretty descriptive email that I'd like to send out, you know, advising the First Electman, the police chief, Mr. Tom Amy, about how we are progressing through the storm, any problems we're having, something that might delay our progress. This way, it's communicated, and everybody has a good idea of what we're up against.
Yeah, I mean, the email communications are definitely helpful to myself and to Chief Metzler and to Tom Amy as we need to plan for different things. You could see, just in the course of basically 24 hours, we got three or four updates specific to the storm, the tracking of the weather, which is going to lead into some software that Tony's asking for, that we provide, software that was used, I believe down in Bridgeport, that was very effective that we've been able to piggyback off of a little bit. But we obviously need to get our own, own software.
You have the literature attached.
Yeah.
If you'd like to review it, take a look, it'll give you a good idea. I mean, this, this software that we're buying, it will give you, not only for winter storms, but all-inclusive weather. So if you're having an outing in the summertime, and you got a bad lightning storm coming, it'll even give you an alert as to, you know, dangerous situation that might be coming your way. Or you could alert, you know, people, the venue.
So this, this Weather Sentry online system would also help our parks and rec department? Basically, if this kids are out playing soccer,
Oh, absolutely.
or, you know, lightning storm, the kids are in the field, football players are on the field.
Absolutely. Right, and now as it is, it will send me and Tom, it'll give us alerts, it'll give us a weather forecast every day. So let's say, you know, I got, we got a storm coming in, it's an ice storm. It'll alert you six hours before the start of the storm. You know, your town is forecasting to get hit with half an inch of ice. Prepare yourself, plan accordingly.
And it's specific to our area?
Specific to our area.
Not like, you know, it's not going to give us, you know, Litchfield area, it's going to give us?
Well, it's pretty much a general area, you know. But it's helpful when you're trying to plan for a snowstorm. You know, when you, when you want to figure out, okay, what time do I bring the guys in? When does it change over? How much snow are we getting? I mean, it really is specific to, you know, we got six inches of snow, and then it changed to rain. When you're combating the storm, you kind of have to know this stuff. You know, you don't want to drop salt if you don't have to. So these are all key components of when you're planning and how you're directing the storm.
And it will help other departments?
It will help, yeah, it'll help other departments. It'd be a big help for Tom, too, with emergency response. Police could, you know, have a view of it, fire.
How does it differ from, you know, like, the National Weather Service or something?
Well, they don't give you in detail, as, you know, like, the start time. They won't give you the alerts in advance. And, you know, when you're looking at Weather Service or the news channels, it's almost they'll hype it up a little bit.
Sure.
Where it's not as accurate as these detailed.
So you want the real version, not the tablet version?
Right. It's a pretty common tool that a lot, many municipalities are using today.
Yep.
And in my experience of using it, it's very helpful, pretty accurate.
Can you compare that, try to decide with national and local weather forecast?
Yeah, we've done that in Bridgeport. I mean, you know, I'm not going to say it's 100%, weather forecasts are never 100% accurate, but if you look at the packet, it kind of will show you in the emails, you know, like, cut and paste the weather forecast.
Yeah, I can see what you did there.
And then I responded with my plan and how I was going to attack the storm. But basically, I'm trying to be transparent to the board, the Board of Public Works, the Board of Selectmen, of what we're up against and what we're going to do.
The other thing we'll be adding is we're going to switch Tony over from his regular desktop computer to a tablet, and then we'll hotspot his phone, so that way, he'll be able to have essentially all this right at his fingertips while he's out in the cars. The biggest, well, he's out his truck. The biggest thing will be access to GPS of all the trucks, so he'll know where everybody is all the time. If we need to move a truck for a specific reason, whether it be an emergency issue with a school bus, fire truck, what have you, Tony will be in direct contact with the truck, you know, right where they are and be able to move them effectively and efficiently. So we just ordered six tablets, so we'll have that functionality for him in the next week or two, so.
And if you look, if you read through the first page, we did just get our PO for our new plow for the payloader, which is going to be a big plus for us, too. I was kind of shocked when I took over that we didn't have a plow in the payloader.
Actually, I was going to ask, I mean, I was kind of looking at the statistical breakdown here of, I guess, what was the last Saturday storm. Have you noticed, I know this is your first winter, this, I guess, this would be the first snowstorm, so you're going to have a snowstorm ahead. Have you noticed anything glaring that is easily fixable with regard to how we've done it in the past and how we plan on doing it in the future?
Well, I think we've already, we've been, communications have definitely improved within the department. Where I like to bring the staff aboard, you know, they have to be part of this process. So they have to understand what direction we're taking. But to answer your question, I mean, you have to be specific to each storm. You have to look at what you have available for staff. So it's almost a routine. You know, there's nothing standing out of, you know, that's alarming at this time, other than a couple more bodies might be helpful. But this test for our first storm of the season, I mean, again, if you look at the, well, the literature, we had employees out for light duty, employees just retired. So we were up against it, and I thought we handled the storm fairly well, considering.
Would you say that any challenges you had with the storm were mostly due to having guys out?
Well, guys out, and then equipment went down on us, so there's challenges.
There was no, there was no, like, failures by people? It was mostly just things that you couldn't really control that were issues?
Well, I didn't really, other than people, they get, you know, a little nervous. It's an inconvenience. And I don't think people understand sometimes what's involved.
Yeah.
It's really a hard labor task job.
Oh, yeah.
It's time-consuming. You know, you don't want to get your staff out there rushing, undertake your time, guys are getting tired. So, you know, it's helpful when the residents understand that. But I think delivering this to the board, trying to be transparent of how this is working, will only help.
Oh, for sure.
You know, with the residents.
Well, I think, too, along those lines, we had three experienced guys that are on light duty that couldn't plow.
Yeah.
You had another employee who is out on leave for a non-work-related injury. And then you had two recent retirements. So if you look at that, you have six seasoned guys that we normally have that were not available.
Or new guys.
And, you know, our three recent hires were all in trucks. I mean, two of the guys that we just hired today were actually out on full route. So, you know, it made it definitely a challenge for them. And there was some air, so Tony and I met on Monday for about an hour and a half. We drove around looking at different things, some things that were missed. So I think those will be addressed, and I expect that they'll get better with each, each storm as these guys get more and more seasoned. But we did, Jurassic reached out to all the residents that called and had issues, so we had conversations with them.
I was checking complaints as the storm was going. I was dispatching the complaints, but I'm trying to be as fast as possible. The one thing to note, you know, during the storm or cleanup mode, as you, that were in effect, when you're in cleanup mode, sometimes people get nervous of calling in complaints. The worst thing you could do- The worst thing you could do is start pulling people off their routes to respond. Because then it's hard to get a handle and it really take longer to get through it. So, I mean, emergencies is one thing, but you don't want to kind of start pulling, you know. I did hear police on the, on the radio calling some of the drivers. So they might want to understand that they should go through the channels because you don't want to be pulling the drivers off their routes.
I also think it's important, you can, because you know, we're on TV. So I think it's important that you let us know, you let the people know, when does Public Works start plowing? Is it when the snow first starts to fall? Is it when there's an inch? Is it when there's two inches? Is it when the snow stops?
Always a big component to a successful snow operation is to get out in front of it. You know, if you bring the guys in three inches of snow on the ground, you have lost the storm already. You always want to get out before the storm to treat the streets. You have to pre-treat your streets. So you want to be an hour before the snow starts falling. You know, in that area. You don't want to bring them in two, three inches of snow on the ground.
And we noticed that the state, you know, they treat their roads ahead of time.
Right.
Is that something that we could possibly do?
We, I am looking into that now. The reason I didn't put it in this packet in this report, because it's premature. I want to do some research on the numbers, what's involved, construction phase, but I want to get a brine machine. And the brine machine will pre-treat streets twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours in advance of a storm. So if we know a storm is coming in, I could assign the truck, start brining all the hills downtown, the industrial park. You know, that coating on the road buys us time to do an efficient planning. And it also helps with icing conditions. Having that treatment on the road, it prolongs, the roads deteriorate. So they won't ice like, you know, it'll protect against the cold temperatures and everything. So that's very helpful for us. And again, that helpful during the cleanup mode. And if, if you see a storm and you're, you know, you got six, eight inches of snow on the ground and it's twenty degrees outside, if you didn't put your treatment on that street at the beginning of the storm, chances are that that street's going to be a sheet of ice. You'll get the snow up, but underneath it, it'll be just one layer of ice. It'll be like an ice skate, right?
So you're going to start investigating what the cost of that is?
Yes. We're going to, our goal to have that installed is going to be next year. It's not feasible, too late into the season to.
Any other comments, thoughts, questions?
No, I like this breakups, isn't it?
You could see that, you know, the first page was pretty detailed about what we've been working on.
Would we be able to get, not for every storm, but like when we have our, our five monthly meetings, when there is a storm, would we be able to get a copy of this?
Absolutely. Yeah, First Selectman just asked me to put something together, to give the Board of Selectmen an idea. So, but it will follow what our board as well.
Okay. I was about to say, it'd be good to give.
This will be implemented in our monthly reports.
We're going to change the setup run a little bit just to make it a little.
Easier to read.
A little easier to read.
I apologize for the line in the paper, but that's my copy machine. I couldn't help that.
Just because, I mean, I got that almost immediately after the storm from Tony and I had some questions just because I didn't quite understand what some of the things meant. Once he explained it to me, it made more sense. But I want it to be a little bit more user-friendly. So, you know, I'd like to get to the point where we have a tremendous amount of transparency, where we're putting these things even out on the website. So a resident can go in and see what the actual cost of a snowstorm was and get an idea.
I was going to ask if there's a way we could get maybe even these emails that you send as the storm goes out to people.
I mean, we can.
Or even if it's, if it's a broken down, a shorter version.
We could break down. I, I like to be detailed. But if you're looking for information for, for, you know, to put on website, you break it down for your man hours. Cost of the man hours, the salt you use, things of that nature. You don't have to get, you know, into each employee and stuff.
Well, I think obviously this stuff is necessary, that it has, that has to be public information. But I think it's, I, I think it could help alleviate people's concerns and possibly complaints if they had some kind of version of what you've done here, sent to Kurt and Tony and Rory and them. If, if we could have some sort of live updates to go out townwide. Because, you know, maybe that will save somebody from going on Facebook and saying, this is ridiculous. Why is my road not plowed? It's already two o'clock.
That could be done at the town hall level. I wouldn't want to take Tony away from handling a storm.
No, no, I, what I'm saying is if he distributes these emails, which he's doing anyways, then it has to be somebody else's responsibility to get that out.
Yeah.
I would, I wouldn't sell, Tony has to be on Facebook.
I mean, as hard as that bully me, I'm very responsive and it doesn't matter a great deal to me, make people happy.
Well, yeah.
Fortunately, I don't think you're ever going to control perfectly, you know, the negative.
Oh, no, I, I don't think that'll ever happen. But I think if, if you could point people to something really quickly that says, this is why this is happening, instead of having them call you directly or call one of your guys that they might know or call the department.
Pretty much, that's why, you know, I put it together.
Yeah.
It has to be communicated.
Yeah. So this isn't as much for you as it is for Kurt.
It's for Rory and I.
And Rory. A suggestion to get more information.
But the first page will give you an idea. I mean, this is what's involved with preparing for snow. And we started this, you know, I actually started it late. I like to start these preparedness, August, September. Because there's a lot of work involved, but we were successful. All the trucks are also, you know, state inspections are all done, federal inspections.
What's the status of the trucks that had issues during the storm? Are they going to be up and running for the next storm?
Well, the one truck is up and running. The other truck, it looks like we lost the transmission, so.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
I'm going to get quotes on that. But I don't know for sure if I'm going to fix it. I mean, that might be a truck I look at to trade in our next go-around.
That was one of the five-fifties.
Yeah. That cost us quite a bit.
Okay. And again, we're turning the five-fifties over now, one every year, so.
That'll probably be the next truck.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, item number ten, discussion and take possible action regarding Remen Street bid award. In your packets, we have a letter from State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to myself. And I'll read the whole letter just into the record, so we have it. Said, "This correspondence will serve to notify you that the town of Seymour is hereby authorized to award the contract for the construction of this project, excuse me, to the lowest bidder, H.I. Stone and Sons Incorporated of Southbury, Connecticut. After the contract award has taken place and to ensure that the construction phase is properly coordinated with the Department of Transportation, Office of Construction, the town should proceed as follows. Number one, schedule pre-construction meeting. Number two, forward to this office and to District Four, office a copy of the executed contract. And number three, notify District Four Office of the commencement of the construction activities via the enclosed form. Please be advised that all change orders in the construction phase of this project must be requested in writing to the town, excuse me, to this department for review. These requests will be evaluated and must be approved by the state before the order can be given to the contractor. Failure to obtain approvals could jeopardize federal participation in the cost of these changes. If you have any questions concerning the above named project, please contract Mr. Thomas Vienza, project engineer, and his telephone number is listed. And signed by Hugh Hayward, who is the principal engineer of the Highway Division for the Bureau of Engineering and Construction." So Rich, at this point, we're just going to then officially award the bid to H.I. Stone and Sons Incorporated. All right. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to award the contract for, or authorize to award state project number one twenty-four dash one sixty-nine, federal aid project number one thousand one hundred and twenty-four, the reconstruction of Remen Street in the town of Seymour, Connecticut, to H.I. Stone and Sons Incorporated of Southbury, Connecticut, as recommended by Hugh Hayward, principal engineer of the Highway Division of the Bureau of Engineering and Construction. Motion by Al, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. And note that Len excused himself during the vote. Item number eleven, discussion and take possible action regarding awarding of roadway patching bid award. At this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to table. Motion by Stefan. Second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Item number twelve, discussion and take possible action regarding Solarize CT Memorandum of Understanding. In your packets, you have a memo of understanding. Whereas Seymour has been a leader in sustainability efforts in Connecticut, including, whereas solar energy is good for the environment and contributes to the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Whereas generating electricity from solar energy can save town homeowners money on the utility bills and can help residents of the town of Seymour control future energy costs, thereby saving taxpayers' money. Whereas solar energy creates opportunities for economic development and job creation while promoting energy independence. Whereas Smart Power, a not-for-profit entity, is launching Solarize Connecticut to encourage more residents' solar electric installations to reduce energy use, improve the environment, and create jobs by increasing the use of solar technology. Whereas Seymour has endorsed the goals of Solarize Connecticut. Whereas Smart Power will promote Seymour for its participation in Solarize Connecticut in media stories on its website through social marketing and at presentations. Whereas Seymour will promote Socialize, excuse me, Solarize Connecticut, including participating in joint outreach opportunities and will designate a person to coordinate communication activities with Smart Power. Whereas Seymour will assist Smart Power in seeking a solar installer to provide residents with quotes for reduced pricing for solar through the Solarize Seymour campaign. Now therefore, the parties agree as follows. Number one, Seymour commits to promote and participate in the Solarize Connecticut effort known locally as Solarize Seymour, with the goal of becoming a leader in residential solar electric installations in the state of Connecticut. Number two, as is the case with all Solarize projects, Seymour makes no financial or contractual commitment for the Solarize project. The town's support for the project is through in-kind support such as Seymour staff or elected officials working with Smart Power and town volunteers to support the project through a variety of outreach methods. And number three, Smart Power will support Seymour volunteers for outreach, including a town page on www.solaricct.com. Smart Power will hold initial organizing meetings and provide the town with a Solarize Seymour banner and help draft press releases, newsletter articles, and letters to the editor, as well as other promotional items. Smart Power will also hold bi-weekly conference calls for volunteers, town staff, and officials and the selected solar installers to coordinate activities, brainstorm outreach opportunities, and to share information about the progress of Solarize Connecticut. However, while Smart Power will support Solarize Connecticut, it will be the responsibility of the town and the town's volunteers to spearhead outreach activities. Rory has had conversation with these folks and kind of spearheaded the, the discussion with them. So Rory, anything you wanted to add at this point? Just so my mother doesn't yell.
Yeah, there's one thing that we added to this. I sent it to Rich to review. And he just wanted to put in a small clause at the end saying, "Seymour reserves the right to terminate this agreement at any time without prior notice." So I, I sent that to them. Just, I don't, I'm sure this is boilerplate. I don't know if they make edits to it. So we'll, we'll see what they come back with. That being said, all this requires of us, as it says, is outreach. So in the discussion that I had with the representative who came, we would be publicizing informational events on the town website and Facebook. Basically, it's pre-vetted contractors who, and there's different ways of doing it. Some involve putting a lien on the home, some it's low-cost financing options. But all the town does, our role would solely be communication. And they said, you know, generally speaking, depending on the size of the community, the participation isn't huge, but if we get five people, then that's five people. And they'll have solar and lower energy bills. So you figure it, it is worth a shot. And it also increases our eligibility for certain sustainability grant.
And just to go along with that, I'm on the board now for a new entity, which is Sustainable CT, which is modeled after sustainable New Jersey to try to provide more sustainability opportunities in Connecticut. So it's a municipal program. It's designed to work for smaller communities as well as larger communities. It's in the planning stage. We just spent the first six months going through and kind of putting the shell together of the program. And now we'll be kind of filling in that shell over the next year or so. So this is something that will bode nicely to go along with that. So I congratulate Rory or condemn, commend Rory, I should say, not congratulate him, for his work in there. Rory's very good staying on top of this stuff and constantly pushing things to me that he thinks would benefit the residents, which I think this will definitely do. So kudos to Rory and his green thumb. So, all right, with that, if no one has any other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended with town council's comments. Motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Item number thirteen, discussion, take possible action regarding 2016 Homeland Security Grant Program Memorandum of Understanding. So you have the author, authorizing resolution in your packets. And I'll read our part. "Resolved that the Board of Selectmen may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolved that W. Kurt Miller, as First Selectman of the Town of Seymour, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents." Well, that was interesting. Okay. And then this will be certified by Susan DeBarber, our town clerk, and will be sent in, as mentioned, to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. So with that, I'll have, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Next item, item number fourteen, discussion, take possible action regarding 293 Roosevelt Drive tax abatement. Mr. Beterla.
293 Roosevelt Drive.
Mike? Sorry.
So his mother doesn't yell?
My mother will definitely yell at you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. 293 Roosevelt Drive was taken by way of a tax foreclosure by the town of Seymour. The town is presently the property owner and therefore, in accordance with the state law, the town would not exactly be taxing itself. So that's the basis for this exemption.
All right, any questions for town council? Okay, with that, then I will entertain a motion that the town of Seymour provide a tax abatement to 293 Roosevelt Drive. Motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero. Next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, which is executive session. And that is to discuss a claim for the RIBSEC settlement. The town will invite, or the board, excuse me, will invite town council, Richard Beterla, to join us in executive session. And I'll entertain a motion that the board go into executive session at seven fifty-four PM. Motion by Al, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero.